Red down to what's in Foria?
Yeah.
It's basically without.
Community management.
You know, I probably won't.
Okay.
So long term lately, I'm supposed to pick up some granite.
We're part of that.
That they give you.
Of course, it did happen in the history of the country. So that was.
The only thing.
So if I think so.
Yeah.
That I have my ancestry.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for August 28th, 2014, for the County Commission of Dixon County. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the item to consider is the approval of the agenda, and I believe it's just as written, no additions?
No additions.
And so I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do approve the printed agenda.
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of August 21st, work session, regular meeting, also the payroll of $242,827.59, fund expenditures of $205,824.29, abatements of $463.48, and a wire payment of $59.98.
I may we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda, and if there is any time that someone wants to set aside any item for discussion on that, we can certainly do that. So we do have the motion and the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Craig, we'll go ahead and start with you for commissioner comments.
Laverne and I both attended the fact here down at Fred Kuskowski place on Tuesday. Excellent turnout. I think it was way beyond what anybody thought it would be. Fred's done a great job of making, utilizing his fixtures in Dixon County and Morris County as well, as can be expected. Department of Environmental Services helped with it. FSA was there, Farm Service Agency, and the Extension is the one that put it all together. Couple of good speakers that made presentations. Four hours of good, two and a half, three and a half hours of good information. I was out in Denver, North Central Regional Planning Commission. I was out there over the weekend, last weekend. We went through, Doug McKinney and I took a bus tour up to Golden, went to a couple of microbreweries. We have five in our 12 counties. Up there, the one was New Belgium. It's one of the three biggest microbreweries. Sam Adams is one, the biggest one. Microbreweries, anything over two million barrels a year. Give you an example of the one there, New Belgium, they produce about 800,000 barrels a year. Budweiser produces that in about, less than two days. So that kind of puts it in scale. The New Belgium was started by a microengineer and a social worker. Started off in his garage basement, so to speak, was one of the. The Regional Planning Commission out there in Boulders, in Denver area, was involved in it. It's kind of like a landall in 207. They had about 285 employees, now they're up to 580 employees there. And it's now become employee-owned, so it's employee-owned business. Little more information here, if I more you want to know. There is 16 microbreweries in Fort Collins. So a town of 150,000 has that many, and there's another meeting available in the Boulder area, or the Fort Collins area. We'll be attending the North Central Regional Planning Commission meeting, and it's going to be in many offices this afternoon, July 21st. There was nothing on the computer for us to address. That's all I had.
Thank you. Laverne?
Yes, like I said, I really appreciated the cooperation of all the people that put on the pasture management meeting, and also the Fred Kuskowski family for letting us actually walk in their pastures, see their watering systems, and the management of the grass, and very educational meeting. Last night, we did have, we brought the township representatives in, and we were discussing the half-cent sales tax issue that we got on our agenda today for road and bridges, and I thought we had a good turnout, a good correspondence between the township people and us. Like I say, I think it's just a matter of education that we're going to need to get out to the public before election time if we put that on the ballot. So I think, like I said, that was a good meeting to kind of get, kick things off, and let's say that's. Thought we had some good discussion with Extension people this morning, and like I say, just keeping in touch and communication with different department heads too, and so that's about all.
That pasture tour that you and Craig attended, you mentioned there's a good number, but how many were in the ten slot?
I would say close to 100, wouldn't you?
Yeah, yeah.
I tried to count, but the.
Yeah, I know, I should have asked, I know Laura counted them and stuff.
Did she?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say between 90 and 110.
And I thought one thing Laura made a good point when she was in here visiting with us, to mention that, you know, that was in cooperation with other groups, and I guess probably included Dixon as well as Morris County a little bit, or is it more Dixon?
There's more Dixon than Morris, but I.
There were some.
There were some representatives there.
Ranchers, yeah, some ranchers and stuff from Morris County.
Yeah, as far as, yeah, the people that attended, I mean, we even had them as far as up in Ottawa County coming. It's mostly people that, you know, that has grassland and cattle operations and.
But I, you know, really was impressed, you know, from the comments on that because, you know, that does get the message out when you have more people show up. You know, it just seemed very, very effective. One thing that I've attended this morning, they had the Military Affairs Council breakfast over at Junction City, and I was in attendance, and the speaker, retired general Maddox, is with AUSA, and of course, they're considered the voice of the Army, and an advocacy group, but they also have offices, you know, back at Washington DC. And they did provide me with some information if we would want to consider a membership, and so I'll leave that information here, and we can discuss that, because they do have individual memberships, retired military corporate memberships, and so it adds to their effectiveness to, you know, broaden their support, and Fort Riley certainly has an impact, a positive impact on this area. And that's, that's pretty much all I had. I will just make mention, like you alluded to, we had the kind of, Jill was in here and Laura and Chelsea to tell us, and we just talked about the fair that just recently took place, and had a report, and I mean, we heard lots of positive comments, but I mean, that's something that they, like many groups, after the fair's taken place, they evaluate and, you know, kind of look over things, and they always look for ways to sharpen the saw or improve things, and, but anyway, we had a real positive report from them. And then also Randy Barton was in earlier, and so we've received an update from him. That's all I have.
Yeah, Jen Meyer with the.
Oh, yes.
And with the RAS program too.
The lower.
Lower, lower.
Lower, lower, Spooky Hill. Okay.
What I said.
And she provided us with lots of acronyms for some things they do. Okay, that's all we have. At this time, we'll go ahead and, are there any other public comments? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and hear a report from our county administrator, Brad Homan.
We have received an email resignation from Scott Wong, who was on our planning commission. I think you were aware of that, that that was coming, that Dustin has began his search. And I think you kind of made a comment last week, that we're looking for someone from the south end of the county to fill that vacancy. The first street intersection project to see has, commission is scheduled to start next week. The contractor approached us about storing some materials over in our west lot, gravel lot, and putting some vehicles possibly on our west parking lot, which we were agreeing to with some conditions that are paid lots, so we'll be cooperating with them and helping them out on that, so. Shilling, again, is planning on beginning the chip shilling of the 12.12 miles of road that had the issues. That'll be starting Tuesday, and I plan to be contracting that for them, and I'll be working on that area, so we'll have that going on. The 1700 avenue bridge that we had up for sale, which remains for sale, I guess, we did not receive any bids on that. The gentleman that was interested is still interested, however, he's having some issues getting his liability insurance company to, I'm convinced that he can do it, so he's looking at a couple options of working that out. I told him, even though we had a deadline, that we would extend that at any point, he was interested, go ahead and submit us a bid, and we'll look at it, but we did not receive any as of yet, so. Let's see, Longford Road Fire Department, they were in yesterday, one of their personnel, they're looking at building a new station in the area of 2500 and Hawk Road, which is a great thing, down in the corner, southeast corner of their fire district. That's kind of an open area down there, that really, their ISO rating suffers because of the location, and they're not being responsible within five miles in that area, so that would help tremendously. The issue that they were needing to deal with is within our zoning regulations, you have to have a minimum of three acres. Doesn't take three acres to put a fire station, of course, and they don't want to have three acres. They've got a landowner that's willing to give them, you know, a quarter or half acre that they need to locate that. We do have an exception to the rule within our zoning regulations, specifically for critical infrastructure, that we can, we can deal with that, and so they're working with Dustin, and we'll be coming back to you, possibly as quick as next week, next week's meeting to get an approval for that application, so. But that's, that'll be a real benefit for the people north of Abbling and that fire district, so I want to commend them for wanting and doing that, because that's a big step for the fire, fire department. Now, we're finishing up the final draft of the payment books for Detroit sewer district. Janelle's been working with the vendor on that, and we've sent that back, and very soon, here within next week or two, we'll have those payment books. I think I ran through that a few weeks ago, but we put together a three-year, I believe, payment book that we'll send out to them, and that will prevent us from having to send monthly statements out to them. Now, I have a payment book just like a car or house, or you would get from your bank to take a tear off with the due date and the amount, and send them a coupon, and they'll have their account number and such on it. That'll actually save us and then quite a bit of money over the long haul, save us a lot of trouble, so. We found a company that can print those, and we're getting those paid, so.
Was they, are they going to be able to direct deposit their money or not?
Yes, they will.
Yeah, so we also had one that came in and paid the.
Full them out.
Full them out, so. One, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, they can make arrangements if they want to have a deducted, a direct deposit, so. Let's see, I did get a call, or actually, it was an email from Clark Duffy, who owns the property up around the Wilson Bridge, asking some questions about that, as well as some dumping up there, and also about the conditional use permit that exists with the Walker Stone quarry. Clark had been in a few years ago. I think Laverne was on the commission then, probably. I don't remember how long ago, it's, time flies, you know, maybe it was before you.
No.
So it's been more than a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
But he was concerned about the conditional use permit, getting the quarry reclaimed, and following those guidelines. I know, I talked to Dustin, and time's kind of got away from us, but he was going to attempt it about today, and look at a few of those areas, and that was one of them. I don't know whether or any would prevent him from getting up there or not, but I suspect he's out as we speak, probably looking at that, so we will be coming back to you on that most probably in the next few weeks. Clark had also requested that, he wanted to put a sign up on the Wilson Bridge, a historical sign, and that had been approved some time ago, and we had told him if he wanted us, our personnel installed it, if he'd provide us the sign, we would do that, so I think he's interested in doing that. It's beneficial for us to do that, so we make sure it's installed properly, and it's not accidentally drilled into a phone line or something, and so. We are in the process of getting the generator moved onto the new pad. The guys poured the pads for the generator into the shop last week, and poured a pad for the propane tank. Propane tank's already been set, and with any luck, here next week or so, we'll have backup power in place down there for our expensive generator we have, so.
Will that be able to run pretty much everything that they?
It will not run the whole shop, but it will run a portion of the shop and the fuel system, so. Yeah, it won't run the whole thing, but it'll run enough that it'll keep us going, and keep us in business if we, if we have an extended outage, so. And we're really looking forward to getting that in place, so. And then as far as Tuesday night, I thought we had a really good meeting with the townships too. We had about 25 people there, which, given the nature of it and timeframe there, which is probably good, we had about two-thirds of the townships were represented, so I talked to Martin and John yesterday, and we kind of compared comments and opinions, and none of the three of us had any negative comments about the half-cent sales tax. Everything was positive, and I think similar to what Laverne mentioned, that we just need to make sure we get it out to the public, and if people understand the issue, it seems like it'll be, it'll be received well, so. We'll plan on taking it forward if you pass the resolution today and get it done.
I think the photos that you had were very good, and maybe you could even expand a few more if you had them available, but I think, like I say, if people see the conditions, you're on the niche side of some of them bridges, they would understand why they need to be.
They'd probably be a little nervous about driving across some of them.
But it is an issue where you drive across them, and you don't think anything about what's holding the bridge up, and we got to look at the total pictures.
That's all I've got.
Well, Brad, I would like to say I thought you did an excellent job in making the presentation. I think all three commissioners would echo that. Real good job.
And when we get to this portion too of the resolution, I think we'll want some summary information as far as what we're looking at as far as the bridges and roads. Okay, at this time, we'll go to notices and communications. And we did, we have received a few things here in the mail. We have a letter from the Department of Commerce. And this is regarding the step project and the single bid, and it just mentions that they are in receipt of the letter dated August 14th, in which we did make a request for a single source bid waiver for the purchase of reinforcing steel, vehicle awning, kitchen cabinets, and building materials. And as you recall, Clark Lumber was the single bidder, but it was made known to several that they didn't have opportunity to bid, and so they have granted authority to Clark Lumber to proceed. It says, based on the material included in the letter, we have no objection to the county awarding a materials contract to Clark Lumber. So we can have this on file and notify the, those down at Navarre, but also gives us the green light to go ahead. We also, and it was informational, and I believe this has been in the newspaper also, but I'll go ahead and mention that we were notified by the district judges of the eighth judicial district, that they have been ordered to have a grand jury summoned pursuant to the petition filed by Phil Cosby, August 5th, 2014. At this time, and this is from Cindy McDonald, she just mentions that there will be some things that she'll have to provide us later as far as compensation to jurors, court reporters, investigators, special attorneys, and witnesses, and this will come out of the county's general fund, and so that's something that we need to be aware of, that it does come out of our county fund. And then the district court will set the amount of the compensation for the court reporter, investigator, and special attorney. It just mentions Judge Stephen Hornbaker from Geary County District Court, which is part of the eighth judicial district, has been assigned per side over the grand jury. So we've got that on file. This was a letter that we received from the Department of the Army, and it's thanking us for a July 24th, 2014 letter concerning the impact of Fort Riley and the surrounding communities, and of course, we had a request and were encouraged that individuals and municipalities and counties let it be known, the importance of Fort Riley as far as a regional impact. And so they did receive that letter, and it also says, thank you for continuing support of our soldiers and their families. This is from Robert Whittick, he's Colonel, US Army. Another item we had, and this is just procedural, from the Department of Health and Environment, and KDHE does notify us anytime that there are permits that are, where there's applicants, and this is from across the state, but the one that would draw attention to Dickinson County. There is a permit is being reissued for an existing facility with maximum capacity of 61 head of swine, more than 55 pounds, 360 head of swine, 55 pounds or less, 180 head of cattle, more than 700 pounds, 180, less than 700 pounds. There's no change in the permitted animal units, and this is for Jerry Slieter, Abbling, Kansas, this is 733 2500 Avenue. This one has extra tape on it, so it's. Okay, this is just in closing a public notice. This also is from the Department of Environment, Bureau of Water, so it's from KDHE, and it's public notice regarding the proposed Kansas water pollution control permits for ag and related waste authorization to discharge under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems. So I guess I could have said NPDES, and I've been quicker, but that's who it's from, so. The other items we have, a couple of magazines, Kansas Preservation, and this is one for us to take a look at if you wish, and also the Kansas Prosecutor, which is the official publication of Kansas county and district attorneys. I assume they probably go ahead and send that over to the county attorney's office also, and we just have a matching copy. Okay. Were there any other communications that either of you received, email or phone calls or in person?
None.
No.
Okay. At this time, the next item is to consider a resolution, and this is a resolution to consider putting a one-half percent sales tax to be levied for the purpose of financing cost of bridges and roadway and construction for the November general ballot. This has been something that we have been discussing here in recent months, and as mentioned earlier, we did invite the township officers to a meeting here at the courthouse the other evening, and just to kind of discuss and also have a presentation on what some of this would involve. Brad, would you want to go ahead and maybe make some summary remarks, and then if there's any comments or questions, we can do that following his remarks.
Sure, this has kind of come to your attention over the past year or two, simply because of the fact that the difference in the margin between the revenue that we've been able to generate from our sources and the cost of maintaining and constructing roads and bridges in the county has, the gap has gotten larger, and we've had a couple of issues that surfaced here in the last few months with bridges, large bridges that are going to need some rehabilitation or maintenance, that we're simply, if they play out like we're 99% sure they will, and we don't have the budget money at this point to be able to keep those up, so. It's not, I can't say it's a total shock to us, we've kind of prolonged the agony, if you will, for some time, but this is, by doing the sales taxes, is one of the, what seems to be a more preferred method of generating some revenue, specifically for roads and bridges in Dickinson County. Just as a kind of a little rehash, we have 200 miles of paved asphalt roads that we maintain, we have 100 miles of gravel road that we maintain, out of the 1,510 miles of county and township road that is in this county. Our county is 854 square miles, it's predominantly geared up in mile sections, and each mile section, for the most part, has a road through it, so we're fortunate to have, have that design and that makeup, however comes our price. On the bridge side, we have just a little over 1,300 structures and culvers that are 20 feet in length or shorter, that we're responsible for. Out of that 1,300, we know that 300 of those need attention as we speak today. When you get into the larger bridges that are bigger than that, we have 300 of those that we're responsible for in our county. Now, those 300, as it stands today, we know 36 of those that need attention at various stages, some whistle others, so. With all that said, this is simply a method of generating some revenue to help maintain our infrastructure in that, in that area. The one thing that I would note, that it seemed to be a question of concern at our meeting Tuesday night by the township board members, which I thought was a very good question, and something that maybe we took for granted, but the concern was, how do we document, how do we, you know, if that passes, how do we ensure that that money can only be used for that and not for something else? Just to clarify, where it's, it's an initiative for, a sales tax initiative for roads and bridges, that's the only thing it can be spent for, and it would be put in a special fund for that purpose, so. And we made that clear, and I think that put a lot of people at ease that it wouldn't be used for some other purpose, you know, county-wise, so. That kind of brings us to today. Doug is prepared the resolution. The resolution is prepared, we're simply bringing it to a vote on the ballot in November, in November's election, for voters to approve that, and a half cent, by today's numbers, and what we've seen in the last couple of years, a half, a half cent sales tax on top of what we get now, for that purpose would generate a little over a million dollars a year for roads and bridges, so. If this, if retail sales stays at the level that it has, and has been for the last 18 months or so.
Okay. I think, you know, it is something, then, infrastructure, your roads and your bridges, I mean, certainly are important. I think people realize the importance, and I know just the other day, I happened to be listening to the radio, and I think Lacey Sale, she's superintendent over at Chapman, was being interviewed, and she spoke, is on the Gary Hauser Show on KBI, and she spoke about the importance of the buses and the transportation. Howser Show on KBI, and, and she spoke about the importance of the buses and the transportation, and how many miles that school district covers, and I believe it's like five hundred and sixty miles a day, and of course, that's not the only school district, and all of our school districts in the county do reach out into the rural areas, and, you know, I think we always take it for granted as we go, some of the shortest routes or over some of the bridges and roads, you know, that the maintenance is in place, the inspections are taking place. And one of the things I know, Brad, you had brought up to us, is that there, when you look at, there's, there's five bridges that cross the Smoky Hill River from south to north, and, and of those bridges, of course, you have Highway fifteen, which the, the state would be in charge of, but four out of the five are the responsibility of the counties. And, and, and some of those are pretty expensive bridges, too, and I, what kind of range? I mean, I know we do have all these different sizes of bridges and situations, but what's a bridge like that cost, and maybe some of the smaller bridges, and what are some of the things the county has done to offset some of those expenses currently?
Well, bridge sizes, I could estimate based on what we've been paying, but for example, the one out on Nineteen Hundred Avenue, the Tenor KDOT program now would be replaced. It's a concrete bridge, roughly a hundred feet long. That is estimated by the engineers, by today's numbers, would be about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost to replace it. That's smaller than the one on Eden Road that has, that crosses the Smoky Hill River by three times, probably, so I don't know that it, it would be three times that, but I would estimate that very, very confidently that to replace the one on Eden Road, if, if in fact it got beyond the point of no repair, and we didn't do anything on it, we'd be looking at a minimum of a million and a half, probably two million dollars to replace that, that size of the structure. That's one of the four that we own that crosses the Smoky Hill River. That particular bridge, I mentioned that purposely because earlier this summer, it did have some pretty severe deteriorations on the deck that we went out and patched, did temporary patches to, that are the type, or nature that it's going to deteriorate more, and it's exhibiting signs of, of, of wear and tear that's primarily due to salt and the chemicals deteriorating, and so it's going to need a rehabilitation and a repair project of that nature at magnitude, the county engineer estimates, probably another half million dollars. So at this point, we can either, and this is just one instance, we can spend a half million to keep that one in good shape for another forty or fifty years, or if we let it go and roll the dice, we might be spending two million to replace it here in a couple of years if, if we don't, so. Either way, at this point in our budget, we simply don't have that kind of money to do that there, and a couple of other locations that we probably will closely follow. Along that same lines, that, that particular bridge was built in nineteen seventy, a little over, you know, right at forty, forty years old. The one at Solomon that crosses the Smoky Hills is only about six or eight years older than, or newer than that. The one on Jeep Road, it's a couple of years more on that, and the one at, on Rain Road is about the same vintage as well. So I think it's reasonable to assume that if one of those is starting to exhibit the signs of that, they were all built with the same specs at, at the time, that we're probably going to be looking in the future of having three or four more with the same issues. And it just basically costs of doing business to keep those things in good shape, and to know that they're going to need, need maintenance, we just would like to have them last a lot longer, but...
And I know a couple of years ago, we were down there and were able to, south of Enterprise, about three miles there on Forty-three, and then east a little bit, a bridge that...
About Eighteen Hundred, yeah.
We had taken care of, well, there was one that we had actually replaced ourselves, the highway department had, and...
By Pearl?
Had, yes, and had quite a savings there, and you might kind of describe that situation. So I mean, and I guess the point I'm making is, it's not like we're just, we haven't, and the former county commissioners have not just ignored or looked the other way or let things go, it's just a matter that, that we aren't keeping up, I mean, we need an extra effort, but there's an example of one that we saved, the, the county had quite a savings.
Yeah, that's a, that's a larger steel span bridge, but over the past, well, let me, let me back up. Our, our road and bridge crews do build and replace our own bridges that we're capable of doing, and that typically is a, a smaller sized bridge, which makes up the majority of what those three hundred bridges are that we have in our county. We, over the past three years, have replaced, I have to go back to my notes, but we've replaced roughly, well, in two thousand and eleven, our crews replaced eleven bridges in culvert, larger culverts, and two thousand and twelve, they replaced twenty, and last year, we replaced eighteen. And that's typically where they'll go in and remove the old deteriorated structure and replace it with a steel span structure, with a steel deck, and then cover it with material that, what we estimate is a fifty to a seventy-five year lifespan on those type of structures. They, for the most part, they have no weight limit on them, they handle whatever, go across it, and it's a very good complement to the old term of hiring and contracting those out, so. But when you get into the concrete structures, we don't have the staff nor the capability to replace those or rebuild those, so those are contracted out, so. We do have the one on Nineteen Hundred Avenue, which currently needs to be replaced, it, it has deteriorated beyond the point of, of being rehabilitated, and it's in the pro-KDOT program to use federal transportation funds on it. It's the next one in our five-year rotation, and currently, it's scheduled to be let the end of two thousand and sixteen, is as soon as that we would have, they, they would provide us the authority to do that, so.
Well, I'll, I'll just make one, this isn't a, a new idea that we've just come up with, is, is a sales tax to try to support road and bridges, but, you know, since I've been on almost four years, and I guess I have been thinking in that direction for a long time, that if we, if we can't keep up, it's, we don't have a lot of options to raise the money, and it's basically the sales tax or, or putting it on property tax, and I think you did some figuring, it would, it would mean almost a five mil increase to generate the same amount of dollars of the half cent sales tax, and it's just a little more palatable for the people to be able to spread out the, the sales tax, you get some of that money for people that are driving in, using the roads and bridges, and so it does get a broader base of people paying for that, and, but also, I, I think a very good comment is, you know, pay now or pay later, and, and if we don't do some of these things, we're going to end up paying a whole lot more money later, and, and I'd just like, some of these bridges that, that we can, uh, uh, go ahead and get them sealed with material now to make them last, it's a lot better plan than, than, than waiting and not doing anything and, and having a big cost later on. So I, I've kind of been promoting this for quite a few years.
Not to make the conversation last any longer, but I think we, we don't want to do what Slade County does, is go to a two-mile grid, so that, you know, if we have a bridge go out, we're going to not replace it. There's been some study done, what the cost if you have to do that extra transportation around it. I, like I said, I, we can, commissioners, we need to do the best job we can selling, and if the people bring it to a vote, the residents of Dixon County, either from sported or not sported, but if we don't get it sported, there's going to be, have to be some, this commission is going to have to make some decisions on which bridges are not open, and nobody wants their bridges to be closed. That's all I have, Lynn.
And on occasion, there are bridges that do get closed, I mean, it's not like we just replace everything or, but...
But nobody wants their bridge closed.
And depends on the traffic amounts and...
But, but this is for a five-year...
Yes, that's right.
So at the end of the five years, we'd either have to bring it up to another vote or to get extended.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only way to extend it would be for another...
And that would give opportunity, too, to show how the money was used, considering if...
Be evaluated at that time to see whether it's still necessary or not.
And Craig makes a good point, I mean, this, this puts it in the hands of, of the voters to, you know, consider the course of action, and, and, and we have a responsibility and, and the townships and those involved, you know, to go ahead and, and establish what the needs are and present the case, so people do have information and good information to base their decision, and so, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. Are there any other comments before we consider the resolution? I might ask our clerk, because she is involved with the elections, the timeliness of this as far as would allow it to be on a ballot in November, and procedurally, what do you have to do or what do we need to do for that?
We just need to sign it, and then we'll get it put into the, we call it portal, to have it put on the ballot.
Okay.
And that needs to be done in, by mid-September.
And that's just more of the procedural that takes place, based on what the state guidelines I'll go ahead and read, read this, but if the resolution is resolved, that the Board of County Commissioners would put this special question for election, and it shall be held in a manner prescribed by the law on the fourth day of November, and that would be our next election, two thousand and fourteen, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of Dixon County, the question of levying a countywide retailer's sales tack and tax in Dickinson County, and this would, rate would be point five or a half percent, and it's for the sole purpose of financing the cost of bridges, roadway construction, and improvements. And there, there's a little bit more here, but that's, in essence, what the resolution is. Are there any other questions or comments?
I move with the resolution, perhaps, cent sales tax on the next general election ballot.
What is the number of the resolution?
So, in the resolution number zero eight two eight one four?
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Chamberlain, the second from Commissioner Myers, that we adopt Dixon County Resolution Number Zero Eight Two Eight One Four, and the purpose of it is to place on the ballot a half percent sales tax for the electorate to vote on, and it'd be for the specific purpose of funding of bridges and roads in Dickinson County. Is there any further discussion or comments? All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is there another one that they need to take action on?
There's one that needs to be taken on, do they have the notice of special question or election?
Yeah, that's...
Okay, that would be the next document.
Okay.
Inspector return page down.
So this is, goes with this, and we will, thank you for bringing that up. We also need to consider the notice of a special question election, and this would be to all the electors of Dixon County, and it's just adopting how the, the question would read on the ballot. And this is something, I guess, Doug, you have reviewed and...
Yes, I prepared that.
And prepared, okay. I'd go ahead and make the motion that we do approve this notice of the special question election.
Second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second for approval of this special question on the election. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And this first one on the resolution, all three of us need to sign.
Yeah, both of them.
And, okay, and the second one also has all three of us. And I know there'll be more information forthcoming on this, and while we did visit with the township group the other evening, one of the suggestions and comments that came up and was something that, you know, we're certainly looking at, is that we will be holding some sort of town hall meetings and go around throughout the county, or if there, or any civic groups, organizations that would want to have a presentation or a question answered, you know, would certainly, as county commissioners or our county administrator, would make ourselves available to, 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 you know, answer those concerns. Okay, I believe that's all we have on that particular item, so we'll move on to unfinished business. And this was the vacating of a public right-of-way, and this is located in Section Five of Liberty Township. And Brad, go ahead and give us a summary on that.
This is the case that you addressed two weeks ago regarding the vacation of the right-of-way on the Rock Springs property. The original resolution to vacate, or was to vacate everything on the east portion of that property, and at the time, you heard public comments that they, adjacent property owners of Geary County would like to have a small portion on the left east corner of that left attached, and we are back today to, to discuss that particular issue, so. Today, we do have Gordon Hibbert, who's the president of Kansas Forage Foundation, with us, and he may be able to answer any questions that we might have had two weeks ago that I couldn't answer, but, you know, just to reiterate that we had reached an agreement with the Rock Springs Ranch and Forage Foundation, that as far as vacating the roads down there that were, in our opinion, were never really a public right-of-way, but somewhere along the line, they were declared as such, and this is basically an attempt to clean up our maps, so.
So we want to have the confusion, or in the future, if this issue would come up, the documentation is in place that we, as, as the county and, and Forage and groups have, have met and just kind of officially said, this is the way things are, and try to find some mutual ground and agreements and...
Yeah, and from what, what research we've been able to conduct here in Dickinson County, similar events took place back in the mid-eighties, but there was no documentation, so here we're doing it again, and hopefully this time, we can get it documented properly, so.
And there was a bridge in question that we had taken care of the repair, but we're, we're actually, would not be responsible for that bridge.
There was a small structure on the Rock Springs Ranch that washed out due to some rains that happened earlier in the spring, and we have since replaced that bridge, and got it at the speed of Rock Springs. That's part of the agreement, has agreed to take ownership of that from here forward, so, that actually is on a little bit of roads, so.
Would some of you like to, would you like to address that on behalf of Rock Springs?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I'm Gordon Hibbert, I'm the president of Kansas Forage Foundation. Been in communication with Brad, and this is the first time I've had a chance to meet with him, and I also met with Mr. Googler a couple of weeks ago, when I happened to be out of Rock Springs. My office is actually in Manhattan, and we have an operations manager there at Rock Springs. We want to be good neighbors. It's kind of interesting, the, the Rock Springs war that you kind of inherit with a, with a property like that, that's been owned, you know, by Forage since nineteen forty-six, and so I think there was a lot of confusion on both sides in terms of who, who had that road, who had the responsibility for that, and so it doesn't make us too much difference who owns or maintains that. We know that we've been maintaining the road for a number of years, as far as, you know, having the blacktop on there, and, and so when Brad brought this to our attention, we wanted to be as cooperative as we can with the situation. We certainly want to provide... We certainly want to provide, we want to make sure that we're good neighbors and provide access to anybody that doesn't have direct access to a public road. We don't want anybody to be marooned. So we want to accommodate any adjacent tenants and landowners that would have need to get through there. We certainly don't want to, the only thing that might be a concern would be if there's an emergency. We would want to make steps, but I'm sure in those cases we'd have law enforcement and other emergency management folks involved with that as well. So I'll be glad to answer your questions. We certainly want to be as cooperative as we can on both sides, so.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments, Craig or Laverne? And we can hear from others in the audience too.
Well, good to put back up on the screen, Brad. I guess we've had, since two weeks ago, we've kind of looked at this again and?
This is aerial photography of the ranch and with the yellow being the roads that are currently legally public right-of-way. This is Yard Road which cuts across from the west to northeast. This is a section of road that for some reason kind of starts up here at the hairpin curve on the county line and comes down and stops, so we don't know why. We suspect at the time back in '86 when the re-razel took place, that the ranch had actually paved this up to that point. Because if I remember correctly, at the time, this was gravel from then on out and has since been paved or concreted. And they probably saw that, again, probably being the best thing we had, saw that on aerial photography and assumed it was a public road, so they filled it in. And then there's just a little stretch here, the last 500 feet or so along that particular county line and it's also showing us public right-of-way, so.
And that's right where the separation is between Dickinson County and Gary County.
This is the Dickinson-Gary County line, right through that little dotted line. Just going the line is Dickinson-Morse County, so.
Yeah, I think there's, with our agreement, you know, there's no problem at all in turning the one road back to Rock Springs and saying that, like you say, that that is your property and pretty much do what you want. I think where the issue came in was the little road up here which, I guess, we don't know where that's, was originally, or it is a road that just separates the two counties, basically. But I guess my suggestion was that why do we need to do anything with that section of the road? Just leave it like it's always been and if the Googlers want to use that road to get into their pasture or whatever, they would just, we mean as whatever it's been in the past. And whatever maintenance takes place on it, which is probably not going to be much, I guess, like I say, that might be an issue that could come up, but, you know, I don't know that, that, you know, where the responsibility would be there on the maintenance of that little section of the road, if there's any maintenance down on it. But I don't think there's any question but what the other part, you know, we need to get back into Rock Springs hands and so you would have more control over that situation.
Until this came up, we assumed it was. Practically it hasn't been any, so. And I really think it is. I think this is an error.
I think that part probably was an error way back that they ever put it as a public road because realistically, it probably always was private property. But I guess my question is, do we need to do anything with that other section of the road? If Clyde, if you want to speak to that?
I was going to say, yes, Mr. Googler, do you have some comments or?
I'm Clyde Googler and Dennis talks, contact you. Dennis is a mystery for Gary County. And he told me and he had a company there, he would have been here. He came up with a signed document on May 10th of 1950 that had Dickinson County Commissioners, Gary County Commissioners, Liberty Township Board members all signed that that would be shared maintenance on that road. This is what he had told me. I haven't seen the document. He did read part of it to me. This was signed by all nine members involved in that road. Do you have any?
Yeah, Dennis called and told me that he had found that. I don't have a copy of it, it's in my office, but essentially what Clyde's described is accurate. Back in May of 1950 and I briefed the commissioners on this in a work session. He found this document. It refers to a map drawing or a plaque in segments of who would do what, segments, I think, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 or something. And he was wanting us to look and see if we could find it on our side. They were missing the drawing. We worked and we couldn't find the drawing nor the agreement. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist. We just couldn't find it, so. But what it said was at the time that Gary County and Dickinson County would share with the expense of getting that road open through there. It appears to describe to me, and I think Dennis agreed, that the segment that goes up around to the large bridge that we've been addressing and on out east of the corner. And that Gary County would do the work to get it open. Dickinson County would compensate Gary County for $700 for doing that. And that Liberty Township would then maintain one of the sections of that road. And it refers to the sections as being 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 on the plaque drawing. We don't know what the plaque drawing shows because we don't have it. Bottom line is, I think the more important basis for the agreement is that it does show that there was an agreement there for a public road. Dennis didn't have the final word when I talked to him, but he said that he was about 80% sure that Gary County was going to be willing to repair the spot across the creek that's washed out and then treat that as a minimum maintenance road from here on out. Is that what?
That's what he told me, but this brings up another deal. Gordon has given us a letter for using this blacktop. And if Gary County does have a minimum maintenance, they need access also. So this letter would have to be changed to, well, if it's a minimum maintenance, does that need a public access to it or how does that work? I'm not sure.
Well, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary County could dictate what their standards for minimum maintenance is and what access it would mean. There's no, there's no specific requirement on what minimum maintenance gets. It just, it's required to be open, so that would be up to them on what their standards are, so.
Well, I'm referring to this through the camp that you're talking, turning over to the camp. Now, that's part of that road agreement. So Gary has to use that as a minimum maintenance to repair the other part. Where do we stand on this?
Well, Gordon's given us a letter that says we'll have access as well and it referred to this, any entities that would need access, so I'm sure there's no problem there, so.
Should be. That was the intent, yeah.
So if it, and you know, it'd be something reasonable as far as the repairs. So they, we or Gary County would just need to notify Rock Springs. And I mean, just as a courtesy, I would think you'd want to say, we want to bring some equipment through or want to inspect it or something like that. I mean, I've, and then like you mentioned, if it was something, an emergency situation, I mean, I, you know, that kind of trumps everything.
But that would be all the more reason to leave that little section on the far east the way it is and not vacate that, so. In case it isn't part of that, I don't believe that's going to have any effect on the ranch or Rock Springs.
Yeah, we don't, our summer staff may use that tonight.
And you know, I think that's something that's kind of part of Kansas or just the fact of the good neighbor, you know, working together. And I mean, it seems like the solution is there. That, you know, things will be taken care of in a reasonable way, but it, but it does help the county and everyone involved, the Rock Springs and Mr. Googler, just to know this is kind of documented. This is how things are and, you know, it'll help those in the future if any situations arise. But I hope you're satisfied with that. I mean, I think people have tried to work with you and I understand your concern too.
My own feeling is Dickinson, Gary and 4H, you know, kind of all seem to be pulling different ways. I mean, like here, two weeks ago, you wanted to close that. But now you're saying, really, it's fine.
And I, yeah, and I think that was one of the reasons too where we kind of stepped back to kind of just give a little more time together information. But I mean, I hope it's been helpful.
Two weeks ago, we didn't really realize what Gary County was going to do either. But, you know, now it seems like they're kind of on page that they're going to try to keep their section, one section of the road open also. Is that correct?
Yeah, and just for clarification, I would disagree with you, Clyde. Two weeks ago, we didn't want to close that road. I told you that we didn't have a dog in that fight because that's not our jurisdiction.
You want to close that, Schwartz.
Well, that, yeah, that was, that was on our sheet. I agree, but it had nothing to do with closing that.
Why would you throw those two together? They're nothing pertaining to each other.
And my notification said it was Yard Road that you were closing and that's why you had so many here. And that isn't even Yard Road, is it? Correct me if I'm wrong, but?
No, the notification said everything east of Yard Road. And that Yard Road would be intact. We were messing with Yard Road. We want to make sure. Maybe it wasn't clear eye. I don't know.
It apparently wasn't because of the ground here that thought it was Yard Road.
This is a solution though you can live with, I hope. And I mean, I think we've tried to kind of meet you, you know, in the middle and try to work things out and?
I guess my question is, okay, after finding that, the three involved in maintenance, you said you didn't know what Gary was doing. Gary says they didn't know what you were doing. This is why I say there needs to be some communication here as to who's doing what and where we are. And like the letter Gordon gave me, do you have that with you? Can you read that?
Sure.
Gary, Gary.
Let me read it. Do you have a copy of this, President?
I've got a copy of the one you sent me, Gordon.
It was directed to the commission. This was directed to him. Basically, it says the paragraph that, you know, 4H Foundation will not deny access to adjoining property owners. It isn't exclusive and with the exception of potential emergencies, so.
Does adjoining property owners?
With Gary County?
Gary County out. This is one thing that Dennis says needs to be. We can't do anything if we can't get to it.
Well, that wouldn't be, I don't think that's as, you know, I think the spirit of the letter is that anybody that needs to get through there, that has a reason to be through there. I'm not an attorney, so I didn't write it with all the, with all the aspects. But the spirit is whoever needs to get to that area.
I'm not, if it's a minimum maintenance road, you can't deny access to anybody. Is that correct? I mean, so it's not denying access to anybody.
Town, you're correct.
Right. That's, that's how I understood state law, so.
So will that be posted a minimum maintenance down at the bridge you replaced? Or is this a committee to Gary County line?
It would have to be at the Gary County line.
Okay, then that would, it meant the road through the camp.
No, it wouldn't.
So that would admit access, right?
That's their property, not ours, so we have the control.
Well, that's what I say. It needs, on our agreement to my notion, that it's not just the adjoining landlords.
Right.
Am I reading this wrong? The way this reads, Gary County's part of the joint landlord. So they couldn't even get across this blacktop of 4H's bench to work on that road.
Well, it could come any other way.
Well, unless they change that. This also came up in a book from way back when things were laid out. It said the roads were laid out and they weren't developed within seven years. They were back to landowners. So that isn't even an access to, so that comes true. And again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just reading what he, and he showed us this in a state books. So we're caught in the middle. I'm just asking questions. I don't know.
Well, I know you're kind of trying to think of every possibility, but I think, you know, the main thing, here, we've been able to work as a group and we do have a workable solution. And, you know, I don't think we can go down every rabbit trail to figure out every possibility, but I think we have a reasonable solution here. I appreciate you coming in and, I mean, I think we've pretty well covered everything.
I think the important thing is the spirit and intent of the letter that Gordon has provided is to provide us so Gary County, where it uses landowners, anybody that has a legitimate reason to go in or access.
It just says property owners.
Well, technically, I still think.
And I can modify it, Clyde, if you think that?
I'm just trying to cover stuff because all along, you, Brad, you've been saying that it's not documented. And I think we need a document so it doesn't go on down the line and have this all begin again. As to who's doing what and when. Like I say, I'm caught in the middle of three different things here.
Well, I think probably technically, and I just for note of clarification, that right-of-way coming up and touching two, that road would make them a property owner essentially, would it not, Gary County?
Well, yeah, Gary County certainly would be a property owner up to the county line.
Right.
The letter that you have written, you're writing that on behalf of 4H, 4H Foundation? Okay, is that land owned by the 4H Foundation?
Yes.
All of the land is?
Yes, sir.
I don't know. I guess I don't see the problem. I understand what you're saying, Clyde, is, but it sounds like you're going to have a letter that's going to give access to the property. I understand the wording of it is, well, because Gary County's not a landowner, are they going to be prevented from using it? I guess the question would be would anybody coming down the road then be prevented from using it? But it's not, it's not this county's land to give the access to. It's their land. Unless I'm missing something here. I'm sort of getting in on the conversation, but?
This little part here to the right would be different again.
And, and we're going to, we haven't passed it, but, you know, I suggested that we just live out like it is and not.
Yeah, but we have already worded the legal description to exclude this 500 feet. So it would stay intact. Yard Road would stay intact. The only thing that we would vacate would be this piece right here. And I also put an attachment to the resolution that refers to, as the original agreement that the 4H Foundation and the county made regarding the road and the bridge and also the attachment, be it's the letter that Gordon has provided us. So it would be documented, filed with the Register of Detsal Office along with the resolution. So that, like I said before, 30, 40, 50 years from now, our kids and grandkids are sitting in here hashing this out and they've got something that we didn't have to go by, so.
This is why I brought this up, is, you know, if Gary isn't making the maintenance, they're not property owners. I mean, I didn't want to make that wrong basis. I mean, I, I didn't want to make that the whole basis, I guess, I'm happy with it again. And I think there's been some things changed the last two weeks, and I'm really glad you didn't close that two weeks ago. I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments? I think we've pretty well covered it. Is there a resolution number on that, Brad, the way that's prepared?
I'll put your name on it right now.
I'll let our clerk take care of that. And, and I do appreciate all of you coming in, because, I mean, I think that's something when we make the decisions, and we want to hear from the public, but we also want to try to gather some information, and I think the information we've gathered and, and the way everybody's working together on this, I think it's, it's a real positive step, and so I appreciate you coming in. The resolution number for vacating this roadway, and it's per our discussion that we've had here today, zero eight two eight one four A. So we need a motion to adopt that resolution.
So all we're vacating is, is just the loop, is, we're just vacating that part there? Oh, I move that we approve Resolution Oh Eight Two Eight One Four A.
Okay.
The, the road there.
Okay, on Section Five Liberty Township.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? I'll offer the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you again for coming in.
Yes.
We don't, we do not have any other business, so is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Got the motion, the second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.